Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Tuesday, April 20th, 21, 2021, and this is the regular city council meeting this evening. We'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. And our youth council member is going to lead us into pledge. Please stand. Thank you. Roll call with the clerk.
Doug Glasgow.
Here.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Gunnison Clamp.
Present.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you. Our next item on, on the agenda this evening is the oath of office for municipal court judge Charles Greenacre. If you would please come forward. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
Your name, please.
Charles R. Greenacre.
Affirm that as municipal court judge of the city of Montrose, Colorado.
Affirm that as municipal court judge of the city of Montrose.
I will support the constitution of the United States.
I will support the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Montrose.
And charter and ordinances of the city of Montrose.
And will faithfully perform all duties of the office of municipal judge.
And will faithfully perform all of the duties of the office of municipal judge.
For the city of Montrose.
City of Montrose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Now go to work.
Yeah, well, I think.
All right, let's go ahead and.
If the family members like to come on up and get a picture, that'd be great.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening, so item number five, it's the joint city council and youth city council earthquake proclamation, number seven. Harrison. It was come up and he's going to read this for us. It's a joint between the youth city council and, and the city council. And Harrison is the, I believe, the mayor of the city council. Isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And recreation both on the western slope and throughout the world. Whereas the prudence in appropriation of our environment will stand in our future generations. Now therefore, we, city council in Montrose, we city council. And city in Montrose do hereby proclaim the week of April 22nd, 2021, through May first, 2021. In the city of Montrose, we urge all citizens to support efforts to uplift environment. All activities in our city will encourage others to undertake similar actions. Day this 20th of the day of April 21st.
Item number six, in addition to that one, we have the Arbor Day proclamation, which I will read. Arbor Day, April 30, 2021. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a spatial day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious top soils by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper wood for our homes and fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby by proclaim Friday, April 30, 2021, as Arbor Day. And the city of Montrose, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect trees and woodlands, and to support the city's urban forest program. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. And witness herof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Montrose this 20th day of April, 2021. The next item on our agenda is a call for public comment on non-agenda items. The call for public comment agenda items is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concern and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on matters raised during this time. Do we have anyone wanting to speak on non? All right. Can you connect Randy White for us?
Hello.
If you would, please state your name and your address for the record.
I do wish to comment on an agenda item and didn't understand the process. So can we wait to agenda item number 10?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else?
Mr. Mayor, I do not see any other hands raised in the attendees list for non-agenda items, public comment.
All right. Then we'll go to item eight, approval of the minutes. The city council consideration of the minutes of the April 5th, 2021 spatial city council meeting, the April 6th, 2021 spatial city council meeting, and the April 6th, 2021 regular city council meeting. Any comments, staff? Council? In that case, I would take a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the council minutes from the April 5th, April 6th, and the other April 6th meeting, as you read.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. The next item on our list is number nine, and this is the planning commission appointments. And Morgan Thiller.
Thank you. I'd like to give a brief overview of this process to help you as you appoint one or two new planning commissioners. We currently have one vacancy for a regular voting member on the planning commission. And you have six applicants to choose from for that vacancy. The person that you appoint to this position will fulfill the term of that position, which was vacated by Anthony Russo. And so that position's term will end on December 31st, 2022. If you'd like to, you may also appoint an alternate member to the planning commission. And an alternate member is helpful when there is an absence on the planning commission or when a regular voting member needs to recuse from an item. And that ensures that you have a more full board considering an application and voting on an application. An alternate member can contribute to all conversations about applications, even if they're not voting on those applications. So they still can contribute a lot to an application, even if they're not voting on it. If you'd like to appoint an alternate member to the planning commission, you can do so tonight out of the applicants that you have in your packet. And our recommendation is that in order to ensure staggered terms on our planning commission so that all of the terms don't expire at the same time, that the alternate term would expire December 31st, 2024. And I checked with Lisa Del Piccolo, and you don't need to specify that in your motion when you approve. But I just wanted to let you know that that's the plan behind the scenes for these terms. And if you have questions, you can certainly let us know. But this is some of the administrative work that happens when we appoint planning commissioners to the board. And unless you have questions for me, I'll leave it at that and let you begin deliberating. And if you have questions about the process, Lisa Del Piccolo, the clerk, and I are here to help.
All right, thank you. I believe it'd be proper for us to identify who the applicants were. I have Laura Baker, Clifford F. Dodge III, Delphine Judo, Christine Kerson, Kevin S. Coons, and Richard J. Rogers. And our city clerk is going to assist us with our voting.
And, and while she does that, can I just say, I just really appreciate all of these folks stepping up and putting themselves out there with the process, which can be a little intimidating, especially being interviewed by council on a live feed on a public meeting. And I just commend you for that. And I encourage all of you to stay interested and involved in your community because I think we have an impressive slate of candidates.
Are we voting for just the regular first, right?
Mayor Glasgow, we have three votes for Richard J. Rogers and one vote for Clifford F. Dodge III.
All right. Let's go ahead and make a motion and point that person, and then we'll go with the alternate. Could I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we appoint Richard J. Rogers to the planning commission as a regular member.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. We will next make a selection for the alternate.
Mayor Glasgow, we have three votes for Delphine Judo and one vote for Clifford F. Dodge III.
All right. Could I have a motion to appoint an alternate?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we appoint Delphine Judo to the alternate position on the Montrose planning commission with a term expiring December 31st, 2024.
A second there. All right, we have a first and a second. Please vote. The vote on that is unanimous. Certainly would like to thank all of the candidates for taking the time to apply. And don't forget us, we always have a vacancy every now and again, so we can use people along the way. Thank you very much. Our next item is item number 10. An intergovernmental agreement. The city consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Montrose, Montrose and Montrose County regarding a signalization of Chapita Road and Highway 550. Scott Murphy. City engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So let me. I was checking to see if the counties. On there, so if you don't mind keeping an eye out if the county wanted to join. I don't think they are, but I was scrolling quickly. So, so this is the same as what we discussed at work session. Intersection of Chapita and 550 is a Chapita's County right of way. 550 is CDOT right of way. However, there is city traffic on this. And so we've always kind of been a stakeholder in this area as development has occurred down here, starting with Cobble Creek in the early 2000s. So dating back to even before the comprehensive plan and the master plans of, and access control plans in around 2006 to 2008, they'd been talking about it before that time, first kind of got formalized in those plans. And really started getting on paper that eventually the intersection of Chapita and 550 would be signaledized once certain volume thresholds are met. So at those times, it hadn't met those thresholds. Over time, as continued development occurs, both in the county and in Cobble Creek, Waterfall Canyon, some of those, seeing just increased traffic pressures and increased cross-traffic on 550 also that have eventually gotten it close to the, the official warrants being met for a signal at that intersection. Warrants are industry established standards. When you hit a certain volume threshold that it warrants, good name for it, a signal. They don't want to do signals too early. As you can imagine, if, if it's relatively easy to get out, a signal can delay you more because you have to sit and wait for the green when you could have otherwise gone. But once it hits a certain volume, it becomes warranted and is justified in moving forward with the project. Kind of a recent catalyst to start those conversations back up again was as part of the hub project that was being considered by Cobble Creek as part of our development regulations that requires them to perform a traffic impact study. With that study, they obviously studied that intersection, recorded all the volumes, and it looked like those warrants are now, even without that project, at the point where a signal can be justified or can soon be justified. And so with that, we talked, or started, and then from a lot of public feedback we received from the Cobble Creek residents also speaking to the desire for that intersection. We started to talk further to CDOT, the county, and obviously their traffic engineer to really start looking at what a project there would look like and how we would partner to implement that. So through that process, we've drafted this intergovernmental agreement with Montrose County. Through the agreement, they would be the primary stakeholder as the owners of the side street right of way. But we would financially partner in a 60-40 split, 60% of the cost by the county, 40% by the city. Those numbers were determined based on a probation of estimated traffic, who's contributing to that intersection on the side street. That IGA was approved by the county yesterday, so it's signed and ready to go on their part. Should you guys approve tonight, that would put it into effect. With that, we would work on design this year and then target construction. We don't want to do construction in the middle of the busy summer construction season, so we would look to get construction or design completed and permitting through CDOT done in 2021. Get it bid and ready to go, you know, late summer to try and target most of those impacts during the shoulder season. That being said, it's a relatively low impact project. A lot of the work takes place on the shoulders. There isn't a lot of invasive work on the main line itself, so. But nonetheless, if we can reduce those impacts and reduce impacts to summer, peak summer season, we want to do that. So plus with the supply chain doing what it's doing, lead time on a lot of those materials that go into signals is about six to eight months. So that also plays into the schedule. So kind of the earliest, by the time you get through design permitting and procurement and ordering of materials, that's kind of the earliest you could do it anyway. So I'm looking to be done with, or start construction late 2022. So it'd be a budgeted project for the city side of things in '22. The design to be done this year was relatively small, but would come out of reserves. And then there would probably be a little carryover into '23 with construction also. I think other things to say about the intersection safety. So, you know, it's capacity, it's efficiency getting through the intersection, but it's also safety. So as part of the recent design work, we worked with CDOT and a traffic consultant to analyze the crash records or collision records at that intersection. They were slightly above what you'd expect for a, this intersection of similar configuration and volume. Not overwhelming, but nonetheless, any collision with somebody's hurt is not okay. So. So we're happy to be moving forward with this and happy to answer any questions. And I believe there was, yes, some public comment on this one also.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I just appreciate the quick, relatively quick action. I mean, that we've heard a lot from constituents that this intersection is a problem, and I'm looking forward to addressing it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Any staff comments? All right, I will take a public comment. And I believe we have Randy White wanting to make a comment.
Yes, I, just doing an audio check. Am I being heard?
Yes, you are, Randy. Would you please state your name and your address again for us?
So it's Randy White, 535 Cobble Drive, Montrose. And I'm thinking that I do not have the opportunity to have any visuals that you will see from me. Is that true?
That's correct.
All right. Well, I will describe them then. First of all, I am thankful that this is being addressed. I'm thankful for Scott's help in having me communicate with CDOT regarding this project. And I would like to underscore the importance of this as a safety project. It may not quite meet the numerical thresholds that Scott has alluded to. I'm a retired engineer, so I understand the numerical thresholds and that approach to making decisions. However, there needs to be some subjective allowance for factors that those numerical thresholds do not adequately represent. And I will offer you that. If I could show you a picture, you would see this photograph of a pickup truck on its side with its bed facing you. It's nighttime. There is a half a dozen safety people at hand here shining lights. There is a flashing light from a fire truck, two ambulances, and four squad cars. This is an accident that I was an innocent party involved in because I was at the stop sign making a left turn from Chapita down towards the Walmart. And I was waiting for the intersection to clear. Somebody from a pickup truck pulled out from a location that was northbound to make a left turn onto Chapita and was T-boned by a BMW, traveling at least 55, possibly 70 miles an hour. A number of people went to hospital, and the pickup truck was thrown on its side and skidded into my Jeep. Had I been driving my usual Mustang convertible, it likely would have flipped and landed on the roof of my Mustang convertible. And I would not be speaking to you here today to provide testimony to the vit- the vitalness of this change. Basically, while the numerical figures may not have been met years ago, it's been a busy intersection. We've lived in here for 13 years. We use that intersections approximately 15 times a week, sometimes more than twice a day. Many other residents here use that intersection. There's been quite a number of accidents there that I don't know if they've been captured by the reporting system or not, but it's known to be a very deadly intersection. How am I doing on my three minutes?
That's right. We'll let you finish up.
Okay, so with that in mind, I would say not only do it, but do it faster and in a time of the essence fashion, because this is not something that ought to be treated with a normal timetable according to the standards. There will likely be somebody killed in the interim period of time. This is a high-speed intersection. There are 65 mile an hour posted speed limits north and southbound on 550. And when somebody comes out there in this intersection who is unfamiliar with it, and a GPS navigator will take them through that intersection, being unfamiliar, they will make errors, especially at nighttime, and there will be other collisions. And there will likely be somebody die there. I would approach this with time of the essence and see if the implementation calendar can be accelerated. Otherwise, everybody should remember Randy White's testimony on the 20th of April, 2021, and reflect upon it.
All right.
Any questions?
Anyone have a question? All right, thank you very much, Mr. White. We have Kathy DeVore, who's wanting to make comments. We have Kathy DeVore who's wanting to make comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, would you please state your name and your address for us?
Yeah, my name is Kathy DeVore, three eight five seven Graham Mesa Drive in Cobble Creek. I am the president of the Cobble Creek H O A, and I would really like to commend the city and the county for developing this collaborative plan to install this traffic signal. As we all know, it's warranted. And with our county now in green status, there have been even more cars on Chupita and traffic is backing up even more to make a left turn from Chupita onto five fifty. And I just really want to say my appreciation for your efforts to move forward in this project at this point in time. And it will, as Randy said, be for the safety of all. And I'm just curious, and this might be part of the design plan. Will Chupita be still coming in on an angle or will it be more of a you know, perpendicular type intersection, but maybe that's all part of the design process. So thank you so much.
Scott, do you have an answer to that question?
Yeah, for the for the most part, it'll generally follow a lot of the alignment and geometry it has right now. It's one of the challenges there with the Ute Museum and right away constrictions, but it is something that's being evaluated. They looked at routing it because of that skew back in two thousand eight. They looked at routing, rerouting Chupita completely behind the Ute Museum to come out at a different location at five fifty. If that if we were to go that route, it would make the product so large and there's so many right away acquisitions required that it would really push out the implementation of this. So with the latest C dot master plan for access on five fifty, it keeps it in this location. But part of the design, the establishment of speed limits, the establishment of advanced warning systems will all take into account those site distances to ensure that whatever geometry we do end up with will meet standards and be safe.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Kathy. Do we have anyone else? No. All right. Then in that case, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Montrose and Montrose County regarding the signalization of Chupita Road and Highway five fifty as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Get to work now, Scott.
Thanks to Dave Frank, too. He was kind of counsel's liaison to these negotiations to get us here. So thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Very proud to have been working with you on this, something that I believe is really a benefit of our community.
Next item is item number ten. This is a new lodging and entertainment liquor license application. Or number eleven, I'm sorry. You're right. City Council consideration of an application for a new lodging and entertainment liquor license at four thirty one East Main Street for Bliss Beauty Bar Company LLC doing business as Bliss Beauty Bar for consumption on the licensed premises. Stephen Alcorn.
Mister Story, C Sage Unrain is the name of the applicant. So if you see her there. Okay, Sage, why don't we do a mic check to make sure we can hear you? We can see you.
Can you hear us?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, so before the city council is an application for a new lodging and entertainment license for Bliss Beauty Bar located at four thirty one East Main Street for consumption on the premises. For this application, the neighborhood has been defined as the city of Montrose. This is a public hearing for a new lodging and entertainment liquor license. A lodging and entertainment license can be issued to a lodging and entertainment facility selling alcohol beverages by the drink only to customers for consumption on the premises. Forty four dash three dash four twenty eight Colorado liquor enforcement rules classifies a spa experience as entertainment. To qualify as a spa experience, the facility must offer at least three of the following treatments and experiences. A facials, B massage therapy, C skin treatment, D body wraps, or E body waxing. A cursory look indicates the applicant meets this definition and this determination is ultimately up to liquor enforcement. Counsel of the day will look at the needs and desires of the community and have and to have another liquor license issued and the moral character of the applicant. It is incumbent on the applicant to show the current needs of the neighborhood defined as the city are not currently being met by the existing facilities and the adult inhabitants of the city wish to have this new establishment. The permit is in order. The fees have been paid from the city staff's review of the application. We have seen nothing that would prevent this council from issuing a license notwithstanding this hearing. This council will make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer the decision up to thirty days. At this time, I would ask the applicant to virtually step forward, introduce themselves to counsel and announce their home address for the record.
It's Sage Unrain and the address is fourteen oh two two and seventy three Road, Montrose.
Why don't you take a little bit of time to explain to counsel what you envision? Because this is the first time we've had a liquor license like this. So what does your establishment look like? How do you intend to utilize your liquor license and who would be using your services?
So I ran a beauty bar in Denver for four years that had their liquor license. So we're really just looking to enhance our client's experience. And to bring something a little different, unique to Montrose.
Okay, so what what would it look like for a customer coming in?
So clients would just be able to enjoy a cocktail or glass of wine while getting their services done.
Mister Mayor, do you and the counselors wish to examine the petitioner at this point? Or do you wish me to ask some of the preliminary questions that we frequently ask?
I think I'd like to see the testimony and support of applicants.
So it is your intention to draw customers from throughout the city of the city of Montrose, is it not?
Yeah, we, everybody that works there has a really established clientele already.
So we're going to determine that the neighborhood for this hearing is to be the city. Do you object to this determination?
No.
Do you personally think the city needs your establishment to have a liquor license issued?
Yes, I think that clients would enjoy it very much.
And do you think there's a desire on the behalf of the inhabitants of the city for your establishment to be issued a liquor license?
Yes.
Is part of that determination based on the petition that you submitted to the city?
Yes.
So we have a petition with forty six signatures submitted. Eleven signatures were be were determined to be insufficient. Eight were outside the city limits. Two provided insufficient address. One failed to indicate age of the signer. So thirty five signatures were determined to be valid and in support of the license. Comments, we had two yes explanation points and two yes please. What are some of the things that your your potential clients within the city have told you that makes you realize that this would be well received within the city?
That they would just really enjoy having a glass of wine or cocktail while getting their services done to just more a more of a more of a relaxing experience.
Based on your experience in Denver, did you have problems with over service?
We did not.
The city is serious about enforcing the liquor laws in the state of Colorado. Would you describe your familiarity with those laws?
Yes, I just took the class two nights ago.
Okay, two of our counselors will be taking it, I think, on Monday. So do you think that is a good class to take?
Yes, it was a very good class to take. It was super informative.
What what is something that you learned there that you found that you think will be particularly helpful or surprised you that you didn't realize before attending?
Mainly just all the different signs of people being over intoxicated or over served.
In any of your previous liquor light, in your previous experiences, have you been accused of failure to operate under any state or liquor licensed law?
No.
Are you familiar with the underage drinking task force here in the Montrose area?
Yes.
What will you do to ensure that your establishment doesn't violate any of the laws, especially over service and underage service?
So I be in every client and we will only be serving two clients of the salon, not just anybody off of the street. You have to be a client in the salon getting a service done.
And you've already mentioned that you are going to be taking the liquor or that you took the liquor education class. Would you commit to counsel that any of your other servers that would be working for you would also attend the class?
Yeah, they would.
Mister Mayor and counsel, that concludes my questions. I'll turn it over to you to have any input from the from the community and entertain your questions.
You did not have any opposition to the application?
There was no op, no opposition on the petition.
All right, then we'll open a public hearing. Do we have anyone wanting to make comments? None. All right, then I'll close the hearing. And take consideration of a motion to approve the lodging.
Mister Mayor, I move to approve the new lodging and entertainment liquor license at four thirty one East Main Street for Bliss Beauty Bar Company LLC. Doing business as Bliss Beauty Bar for consumption on the licensed premise as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those favor vote. Yay, those vote me. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new city liquor license.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item number twelve. It's ordinance twenty five thirty two on second reading. The city council consideration of an ordinance twenty five thirty two on second reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado for the annexation of the Valley Ranch Edition North. Our senior planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm going to start by sharing my screen here. All right. So first slide, this is the annexation schedule that we've been following for this project. This is also in your packet. And as you mentioned, tonight is the second reading of the annexation and the zoning ordinance. They are two separate actions, but I'm going to present both together as one presentation. This is the location of the property. It's located just south of Ogden Road. The property is identified here as the outlined in yellow and it's a little bit over sixty acres. It is within the city's urban growth boundary. You can tell by the shaded grayish white area there to the north. The area is urbanizing. An annexation agreement was required and the purpose of this annexation is for future residential development in the area. The zoning of additions is found in section four four twenty nine B of our code. And what that means is that the planning commission basically recommends a zoning district to city council. And that was done at a previous meeting, as you could tell from the annexation schedule on the earlier slide. So for this project, they're requesting that the northern end of the property be zoned as R three A, which is medium high density district, and then the southern portion would be zoned as R two, which is low density district. As you can see from this slide, the zoning in the surrounding areas are one A to the north and then agricultural and it's still in the county on the other sides. According to our comprehensive plan, this area is in that little area that's in the orange. So that's listed as residential mixed density medium, which just provides for a mixed use, including single family homes, townhomes duplexes and triplexes. And all of those are allowed within the zoning districts that's being requested for the R for the northern portion as well. Next is a map of our transportation plan. This is just an overall view of the whole city. And then this is a detailed map that shows that there's a proposed minor arterial going through this proposed annexation. And in the annexation agreement, we did provide for language that would dedicate that road and right away area to allow for this road to go through that area. This is in our growth area too, which just means that infrastructure is nearby or in place for the property. And in summary, annexation import impact report and agreement were both required. We believe the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety and welfare, our annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. The planning commission did recommend approval of the requested initial zoning on the March tenth meeting and staff is recommending approval on this project tonight as well.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Counsel, do you have any questions? We've been over this in work sessions. We had the first reading on it, so it is not new to us. Do we have any public comments? We have no public comments. In that case, then I'll consider a motion to adopt ordinance twenty five thirty two on second reading as presented.
Mister Mayor, I recommend we approve ordinance twenty five thirty two on second reading as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item thirteen is ordinance twenty five thirty three on second reading. The city council consideration of ordinance twenty five thirty three on second reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado providing for the zoning of the Valley Ranch Edition North as R three A, medium high density district and R two low density district. And I believe that you've already covered that. Amy, do you have any other comments?
I have nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Do we all accept public comments? Do we have any public comments? We have no public comments and then I'll take a motion.
Mister Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty five thirty three on second reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Ordinance twenty five thirty four on second reading. City council consideration of an ordinance twenty five thirty four on second reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado for the annexation of the Valley Ranch South Edition. Amy Sharp, senior planner.
All right. Thank you. Once again, I'll share my screen and a short presentation that's very similar to the last one. So the first slide here just shows the same schedule as the Valley Ranch Edition North. This one is located just directly south of the Valley Ranch Edition North. So the north one was right here. And then the south one kind of is along Otter Road. This one is just around seventy acres in size. There's two parcels. Both of them are included in this annexation. This one's also within the city's urban growth boundary. Once again, you can tell where city limits are based on kind of the gray and grayish white area that's to the west here. An annexation agreement was also required for this project and it will allow for future residential development, just as the northern portion was. Just for overall view of the entire project area and where it is in relation to some other neighborhoods in the general area. This yellow area shows Valley Ranch Edition North, the Valley Ranch Edition South. And this area over here is Otter Pond. So that kind of just orients you to the general location of the area. The applicant is requesting R one zoning for this project, which is very low density district and has large lots. As you can see here, the surrounding in the zoning area is both R three A and R three. I've attached a example or the draft plot for the annexation here. It's also in your packet. According to our comprehensive plan, just as the previous one, this is also listed as residential mixed density medium in our future land use map. And this is an overview of our transportation plan as I shared in the last presentation. And so once again, this shows the location of the proposed arterial that would go through this property. And again, we allowed or put in language in the annexation agreement that would allow for dedication of this road and right of way. This one is also in growth area two, which just means infrastructure is in place or nearby. In summary, the area is urbanizing more than one six contiguous city limits is consistent with the public health, safety and welfare, our annexation policies and Is consistent with the public health, safety and welfare, our annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. The planning commission did recommend approval of the initial zoning request for this project at the March, March tenth meeting. And staff is recommending approval of both the annexation and the initial zoning for this project.
All right, thank you, Amy. Counsel, do you have any questions? Again, we've been over this one, first reading and or the secondary with first reading and the other discussions at work session. Do we have any public comment? We don't? All right, then I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance two five three four on second reading as presented.
I have a second. Second. All right, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Next item is item sixteen. Ordinance twenty five thirty six on the second reading. Amy Sharp. Oh, did I skip one on this? Yeah, I skipped one on us. We gotta do ordinance twenty five thirty five on second reading. And that's for the zoning of the property, which she just covered previously. So I'll take a motion on that. Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty five thirty five on second reading as presented.
Second. All right, please vote. That passes unanimously. The next item is ordinance thirty five or twenty five thirty six on second reading. And this is for the highway commercial on Highway fifty on the east part of town. Amy.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So this one is a totally different project than the previous two. It's in a different location, but we started it at the same time. So it's following the same annexation schedule that the previous two had. And once again, we're doing the second reading of the annexation and zoning ordinance tonight. This one shows the location of the property that's being annexed and it is just part of Highway fifty, the road, and then the right of way on either side of the road. It doesn't include any private property. This project site is approximately fifteen acres. It is also within the city's urban growth boundary. As you can see here, it's almost completely surrounded by city limits on most sides. The zoning of the surrounding area here is pretty scattered. It's got a lot of business districts and just a little bit of residential, as you can see here. And the proposed zoning is going to be B two highway commercial district. We felt that one made the most sense is is consistent with the zoning in the surrounding area. This is the annexation map, which is also in your packet. In our comprehensive plan, this one is located in the area that's kind of the dark red here, which is listed as major center. As you can tell here in the description, it fits nicely with what is being proposed for the zoning as well in this area. This is in growth area one, which just means infrastructure is already in place in this area. And in summary, an annexation impact report was required to the county because it met the threshold for amount of acreage. It is urbanizing in this area. The proposal is consistent with public health, safety and welfare, our annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. The planning commission did recommend approval of the initial zoning request at the March tenth meeting. And staff is recommending tonight approval of the annexation and the initial zoning for this property. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Staff? Counsel? In that case, I'd accept a motion. Oh, what are they? All right, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance two five three six on second reading as presented.
Second, I have a motion. A second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item second seventeen is ordinance thirty five, twenty five thirty seven on second reading. And this is a continuation of what we just heard from Amy Sharp describing the the annexation and also the zoning on it. Is there any public comment? Nope. Any counsel? This again is one that we've talked to and before, so it's not new to us. And next, I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty five thirty seven on second reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item eighteen is ordinance twenty five thirty eight, second reading. City council consideration of an ordinance twenty five thirty eight on second reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, amending the zoning district of Lot One of Cedar View East Minor Subdivision from R six medium density slash manufactured housing district to B three general commercial district. Senior planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this one's a little bit different. It's still zoning, but it's a little bit different of a project. So this project here is located kind of over off of East Main Street and south of there. It's just south of Turner Automotive. So this one is approximately two acres in size. As you can tell from this map, Turner Automotive is just the north here and it is zoned B three. And we recently did a minor subdivision project to separate out this parcel that's highlighted in black here in order to rezone it to B three as well, and it would allow for expansion of Turner Automotive. So this is the minor subdivision that I just talked about. So minor subdivisions are reviewed and approved administratively. So this one was recorded back in December of twenty twenty one. And as I mentioned, it was done to kind of separate out this lot from the other property in order to then be used as part of Turner Automotive. Any property that wants to be.
Excuse me. As a clarification, said it was changed in December of twenty twenty one. That was December of twenty twenty?
Thank you. Yes. We're not there yet.
She isn't working that well.
I'm not that fast. Thank you. Um, so anytime that a property wants to be rezoned and apple wants to rezone a property, it has to adhere to our rezone criteria. That's in section four four twenty nine A of our code. This is also in your packet and these are the criteria that must be met before a property can be rezoned. So the pre-proposed rezone, as I stated in a previous slide, is to the B three general commercial districts. So this allows for just a large variety of uses that can require large stereo storage areas in order to conveniently serve customers. And this is just a photo of the slide. You can tell here this is the back of Turner Automotive and the property that's being rezoned. In our comprehensive plan, this is listed as general commercial in the future land use map. It's meant for a variety of auto oriented uses and fits well with the intended use and with the rezone as well. Staff does find that the proposal, proposal meets the rezone criteria as stated previously. It does also meet the intent of the B three general commercial district and the comprehensive plan future land use map is compatible with the existing uses in the surrounding area. And the planning commission did recommend approval of this rezone request at the March twenty fourth meeting. We are recommending approval of the reason tonight.
All right, thank you, Amy. I would accept public comment. Do we have any? Nope. Counsel, do you have any questions? In that case, I'll consider a motion for adoption of twenty five thirty eight on first read and second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty five thirty eight on second reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion. A second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. The next item is nineteen, ordinance twenty five thirty nine on second reading. Counsel consideration of the ordinance thirty five or twenty five thirty nine on second reading. An ordinance of the city council, city count, city of Montrose, I think that mistake on there. Vacating the right of way along North Second Street within the city of Montrose. Senior planner, Amy Sharp.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a presentation for this one as well. Right. So the general area of this is at one twenty seven North Lot Avenue is the applicant's address or the general area of where this one's being proposed. If it's actually along North Second Street. So the proposed vacation is along North Second Street. Part of the existing house, as you can see here at one twenty seven North Lot Avenue actually encroaches currently into the North Second Street right of way as shown in the map. So this blue area is the North Second Street right of way that's being requested to be vacated. And this little portion of the house is actually located within that right of way right now. So the owner's requesting that the city vacate this strip of land. It's about eighteen hundred square feet along the north right of way in order to own the entire property on which the house is located. The city that will also retain an eighty eight foot right of way for streets and sidewalks in this area. And it will have the additional benefit of being able to allow for enough buildable area for two more additional homes in this area as part of the redo and subdivision regulations. So the amount of land that's proposed for this vacation will place the entire house on private property instead of having it in the city right of way. And it will be included into the existing law as administrative process. So the next step after this right of way, they're currently going through. They're going to be going through a minor subdivision or an amended plat process where they'll bring in this right of way into their property. And then they're actually going to divide it so they can put two more new homes on this property as well. This is a plat of the vacation right away. And then I'll open it up to any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Do we have any public comment? No public comment? In that case, I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance two five three nine on second reading as presented.
I second.
All right, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Ordinance twenty five forty on the first reading. City council consideration of ordinance twenty five forty on first reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, updating title for chapter four zoning regulation of the city of Montrose. Amending title for chapter four, section twelve, four dash four dash twelve regarding B one central business district. Senior planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you very much. I don't have a presentation for this one, so I'll just start with the general overview and then turn it over to our legal department for further details. So we did do a review of our municipal code in order to specify the types of daytime social service activities that are allowed in the B one, B two, B two A and the B three zoning districts. So we're going to suggest modifications to the code to allow daytime social service activities as a use by right in the zoning districts. There are uses that such as food banks and soup kitchens and counseling centers that have actually previously been allowed in these zoning districts that are currently located in there. And this modification just basically clarifies that these uses are currently operating legally and provides clarification for future similar uses as well in these zoning districts. Additionally, these services are compatible with other uses by rights that are within these zoning districts. And it does meet the intent of the zoning district. So after our last work session, we went back and talked to some of the other different businesses that might be affected by this to make sure that we weren't inadvertently, you know, putting anybody in a dis or no longer allowing their current business in the zoning district. We didn't have any conflicts with that. We also did an amendment to further define daytime, which I'll let legal discuss as well. And then the language also was used to help establish a specific use by right within the B one zoning district, but with limitations to the scope of this particular use by right. And these specified limitations don't carry through to limit other uses by right that might be recognized in the code. So for example, we have other things in the B one zoning district like adult education or other types of services. So it doesn't mean that those things aren't allowed anymore. They're already allowed as a use by right. This is just further clarifying what daytime social services actually is and allowing them to continue and operate in these zoning districts. With that, I will turn it over to our legal department.
Thank you, Amy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public present via Zoom. This proposal for revision to the zoning code was presented at a recorded work session held on March fifteenth, twenty twenty one as a discussion item. Redline version appears on pages one oh two to one oh four of tonight's corrected session packet. And a clean version appears on the pages following one oh five to one oh seven introductory memos on pages one hundred through one oh one. And my presentation tonight will focus on page one oh three of the redline version of the text. I structured the presentation. I tend to present and get executive summary and go through some of the changes made after the presentation in work session. Those changes appear in the redline version as highlighted text. Executive summary, the proposed code language is a single amendment to Montrose Code Section four dash four dash twelve, setting forth a B one zoning designation to add a new section B twenty to the listings of the uses by right. The coverage of that language, as Amy described, is intended to encompass providers of social services cited throughout the city and spread over our zoning map like food banks, food distribution hubs and social service wraparound providers offering a constellation of those services described. The language does not set out an exclusive list of what a daytime social service activity comprises. As discussed in our work session, that was a deliberate drafting choice to allow for some interpretation and some leeway as those offerings may change over time. This language is clarified that such social service activity is a use by right within the B one, B two, B two A and B three as an authorized one by city zoning and that they are able to operate legally to perform those services for the benefit of the indigen. A word on scope, I think it's important here to take maybe a step back and consider what's before the council. This is a proposal for recognition of a new category of a use by right. And this particular use by right is recognized, but it has some express limitations built into it. It builds into the language. As an example, this use by right expressly excludes the overnight sheltering of people. And daytime and night are now defined terms which service also for the limitation on such a provider offering this grouping of social service activities during certain times. The language used about the exceptions limit the scope of this particular use by right. It does not function and it's not structured in such a way to narrow the sorts of activities recognized as as uses of by right in our code elsewhere already. So as an example, the B two highway commercial district recognizes as a listed use by right skilled nursing and assisted living facilities and hospitals. In addition to uses by right listed in B one. A reasonable court would not interpret that language introducing limitations in B twenty for that particular use by right to deem hospitals as not conforming for accepting overnight patients. Or a provider like a CMH, which is zoned this B two from accepting someone overnight on an M one hold on a crisis hold. The memo tries to make that point that if the activities recognized as falling under another use by right, it would not be subject to the restrictions on daytime social service activities in the code change here before you. The memo puts it, the specified limitations in B twenties language do not carry through to limit other uses by right recognized elsewhere by a code. A second, second example that staff heard during outreach was a one provider wanted to have a religious organization that's currently without a place of worship. Be able to use their facility after six P M. To conduct services as part of that provider's intent to have their spaces community center. That activity would fall under another recognized use by right and be one, be ten specifically places of worship, which does not narrow its scope to daytime activity. That would be permissible as it is used by right recognized elsewhere in the code. So that's what we're trying to get at with that language in the memo. One question was whether the term social service provider is the same as allowed in the office residential district designation M C four dash four to ten, which is used there in that code. The term social service providers in the O R office residential district is undefined as it is here, but would be considered by a court likely to be synonymous with that used here. When a legislative body uses the same term throughout a title and section, a court generally considers the terms and phrases to have the same meaning unless language to the contrary appears in the statutory language. The difference between two really is the setting. The O R district section defines that use by right as offices for medically related and professional service providers, including that goes on to list a number of things that seem predominantly to be more geared towards uses such as an office based social service provider like Hilltop down the, down the street from us that provides vouchers and some in-office counseling, but does not feature other services of the type described here. Want to touch on the changes? Definitions of daytime and the converse night are now included. But there's a question at the work session about the possibility of defining daytime itself. Staff discussed that internally and I did some research on that point. Our existing code does define day, it defines day and one dash one dash three as the term day shown be any twenty four hour period from midnight to midnight. Except where the context clearly indicates. Except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning, which it would be the case here since we have authorized activities during the daytime and then exclusions for specified overnight use overnight for sheltering people. I also looked at state law. State law does not define or provide a definition standalone for daytime. They do use that term spread throughout a number of the statutes, but they don't define it. Some statutes use the language only in the daytime between sunrise and sunset. But it's otherwise not a listed defined term in any of the usual spots for general definition used throughout the state code. Like in Title Two. So the decision was made to define by time of day. Drawn from the typical hours sunrise to sunset, so six AM to six P M, which avoids some of the interpretive enforcement problems by defining the term as the hours between sunrise and sunset. Again, the highlighted text is the change here from work session and nights defined as the converse of day. We also struck and religious education and counseling. For some of the reasons we just kind of touched on. Some of that activity may fall under an existing recognized use by right as places of worship. Also. Given that that was a recognized use by right, it posed some interpretive enforcement problems, I think, down the way. When is counseling, religious education and counseling coverable by B twenty? And when is it worship activity under B ten? It would be a difficult thing for staff to parse. So that's why that was struck from this version before council. I want to emphasize in closing comments. This does not authorize this to use by right and overnight shelter. I also want to touch on and reiterate comments from work session that this code amendment does not mean the city is saying it is categorically now and forever. Intending to ban an overnight shelter. Within the city boundaries. Some discussions have occurred among city staff on how that may be best structured. In in law, and I don't want to foreshadow those discussions here other than to reiterate that to the extent there is such a regulation. It would come about with work from the city's community partners and with the relevant stakeholders. With that, I'll take any questions from council.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Anyone have any questions?
Yeah. Now, Matt, you're the public safety attorney, correct?
I am.
And that's part of the two way funding. From your job for public safety.
That is correct.
Okay. Can you sort of explain to the public why you, why this is part of our our public safety?
Well, in in general, this is a an issue of concern during the pandemic, particularly it exacerbated a number of the issues, including homelessness. And the need for some of these daytime social service providers to be recognized as lawful and providing services without a community. So we thought it felt feel squarely within my position to take on this task. In conjunction with Amy.
Thank you. Any other questions? In that case. I'll hold a hearing. Do we have any persons wanting to? All right. In that case, we'll close the hearing. Consider a motion on ordinance twenty five forty on first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to pass ordinance twenty five forty on first reading as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. The next item twenty one is Bear Creek Subdivision filing number five final plat. Council consideration of Bear Creek Subdivision filing five final plat to create fifty nine new residential lots. And dedicate right of way and or easements. Senior Staff, Amy Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. So this next one is the Bear Creek Subdivision filing number five. Many of you are familiar with this subdivision, but for those who are not, it's located north of East Main Street, just south of Lincoln Road, and it's in between County Road sixty five thirty road and sixty six hundred road. As shown by this orange. Kind of odd shaped figure here. This one's approximately fifty one point eight four acres in size. As you mentioned, they are looking to create fifty nine new residential lots as part of this final plat. So it's highlighted here in red on this map. It's located in a variety of zoning districts. It's some in the R three A, which is medium high density district and some in the R five, which is low density manufactured housing district. The Bear Creek subdivision preliminary plat was approved back in July of two thousand and sixteen. So final plat requirements, these are the things that we look for in a final plat. All the lots must meet the minimum lot size required according to the plan development plan for the Bear Creek subdivision. So I did go through and review and make sure all of these lots were in accordance with the P D plan. All the surrounding streets must also be in place and approved by the city engineer and a preliminary letter of infrastructure completion has to be done by Scott Murphy as well. And then all the utilities, the easements, the seawater mains, sewer and utilities must also be installed and Scott also checks for those items as well. This is the subdivision plat before you. This is also in your packet for review. And this one shows the location of all the lots that are going to be approved through this final plat, the ones that are kind of dark and highlighted on this map. And then I'll open it up to any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Amy, for clarification for the public that this is filing five for this subdivision. And so this is an existing established subdivision that they're just expanding, correct?
Correct. So I don't know the whole history on Bear Creek, but they kind of do an overall plat for the entire subdivision and then they do preliminary plats for different portions of it because obviously they can't build out the entire subdivision, you know, in a matter of five years usually. So they usually do, you know, start with a filing one and just piece it out and deal a few lots at a time, a few meaning like on this one's fifty nine. But this is the fifth filing for this subdivision that has been approved.
Right. Anyone else? Do we have any public comments? No public comments, then I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Bear Creek subdivision filing number five final plat expressly conditioned upon city staff. Ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances and municipal code provisions are met and that they and that the applicant adequately addresses all of staff's concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
All right, I have a motion. I'll take a second. Second. We have a motion, a second, please vote. That passes unanimously. The next item, Woodgate Road realignment construction contract. Mr. Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And sorry for the podium. I'm going to try and project here. Sorry, camera. There we go. They found me. Okay. So this is the same as what we discussed at work session with the one change regarding the asbestos abatement, which I'll go into. But for anybody who's just joining, this is our weekly discussion of Woodgate and hopefully our final. For the Woodgate Road realignment project, this is the approval of the expenses for the construction contract itself. And let me get into screen share here. Okay, so. I won't go too deep into the history, but just make reference to our webpage, move mo.co, which is our capital projects page. You can go there to get a lot of detailed history on the background of this project, how we got to this point. Then also you can sign up to get notified for updates on all of our capital projects. If you're wondering what's going on in town. What we're looking to approve tonight is one point seven five two million in expenditures for this project. First part of that is the construction contract at one point four oh seven. For the art is was the base bid is a low bidder for the project, but we're also adding sixty thousand to that. In between bidding and at this point, we obtained ownership of the houses that need to be demolished for this project. They have about sixty thousand dollars worth of asbestos abatement work that needs to be done. We knew about that throughout the duration, but until we could get into the house and do the evaluations, we didn't know what that amount was going to be so that we got that number between bidding and award. And so to streamline that process, we're looking for the one point four six seven awarded on the construction contract. Looking for our have a budget of fifty nine thousand one hundred on a time of materials not to exceed basis for survey and engineering support. So the designers for this project were Delmont consultants out of Montrose here. And then we like to use them as needed on an on call basis. So we only pay for what we use to do the survey to main consistency between design and construction. And then also for any issues that may arise during construction, if they need to fine tune the designs or anything. And then the last piece of that is, let me scroll down to a picture here. There's a pretty substantial cabinet. These are relatively small, but this one's pretty large. It's a kind of a booster station for central link communications for the southern portion of town, a pretty substantial relocate. Because we're putting in, there wasn't a road in the way and they were in a good place. We're putting the road in it. Kind of gets into a gray area on relocation costs and the city has agreed to pay for that relocation to get that out of the way of the new roadway. So that comes in at two hundred and twenty five. And that's another one that that's a budgetary number. I think the actual probably come in about two fifteen, but that's still being finalized. So I'll hit on traffic control just for anybody that's fresh joining that wasn't able to join the work session. So the bulk of the project, let me zoom in here. And these are all available on our website also, these overview drawings, but the road will take a curve here and join up east of Walgreens at East Oak Grove. Long term, this will be around about. But for now, the heavy lift is was getting all of this property acquired and getting this in place to solve the immediate need and then that will come in as volumes increase on East Oak Grove. And that becomes warranted. We don't want to put things in too early. Just to have them sit there underutilized. So. But as far as traffic controls, so the bulk of this work will be taking place out in kind of greenfield construction, open areas. Along the shoulders of Oak Grove or the shoulders of Townsend. The construction contract is set up so that, you know, they can't close Woodgate until they're working on it. And so a lot of this work will take place without really any impact to the motoring public. You may have individual closures here and there on Woodgate for maybe a utility crossing or something to try and open up some work fronts with some of these real relocations. But generally speaking, we hope to keep Woodgate open until at least June or July. Depending on how the the schedule goes, once we do have to close it. You'll see what this map's here is calling S C or soft closures. So they're generally advanced warnings that are meant to discourage through traffic. So you still have openings in both directions to allow access to residential areas as well as the businesses down here. So think of like the car wash, Starbucks and places in here. This is their primary access is off of Woodgate. So we need to maintain that throughout construction. You'll see signage will say business access open and things to try and, you know, make people very well aware of that they can still get in there. The contract is written that access has to be maintained at all times to all businesses and all residences. So that's not happening. My cell phone is on the website. Please give me a call and we'll make sure that happens. In addition to that, so you know, the intersection with Woodgate itself will be closed permanently. So, you know, once once that closure does occur on traffic, that'll be the last it sees traffic. It'll get some barricades across there. And ultimately a new curb gutter and sidewalk across there. To try and discourage. So, you know, the the challenge of this project is a lot of people will come down Woodgate Road. Get to this point and say, I want to find my way out to Oak Grove. Which is the end goal of the project and will definitely help with that, but there is a concern of people wanting to shortcut through this neighborhood during construction. So to try and discourage that, we are putting similar soft closures here. And then also up here on East Oak Grove to, if nothing else, remind people of the construction closure. And try and discourage that short cutting. The reality is, you know, as we've discovered on projects that can be difficult to do, a lot of people get pretty emboldened by cones and barricades. Even to the point, actually, when we did this closure on East Oak Grove construction, somebody drove between two houses to get out. So the bar gets raised every time, unfortunately. But we're gonna, you know, we kind of take an adaptive management approach to these things, try and be as less invasive because we want, you know. Equally important is that these residents and emergency services can get into this neighborhood throughout construction. And so we don't want a hard barricade close this for two reasons. One is again, people get emboldened. You, we don't want to be, we don't want that bar to be raised and be surprised by somebody taking a new route into their neighborhood. But if this gets closed, that forces everyone out to Odell down here, which is quite a bit out of the way. Doable if necessary. So, you know, that's kind of a tool in our back pocket should we encounter problems here. The product itself will extend through November. Or into November. And all product management will be performed and inspection will be performed by the city. With support from Delmont as necessary. Between the capital fund, the water fund and the sewer fund. So the water and sewer elements of the project are paid out of those funds since they're a separate enterprise fund. Between those three, we had one point nine four million. So the total project cost comes in a hundred and ninety thousand under that budget. So. Happy to answer any questions.
Scott, I would just, I think it might have been confusing early on. The roundabout will not be put in until later date.
Correct. Yeah, we don't have. So a couple, you know, elaborate on that a little more. We don't have all the property or we haven't acquired all the property purchased, all the property necessary to complete that roundabout. One of those involves another house. And so those can get become pretty lengthy acquisitions. So we're working on those separate from this project, but we didn't want any of those to potentially hold up this project. And the the modeling shows, so you know, that this is a tight area. I think, you know, full disclosure is, you know, this isn't a silver bullet that's going to fix the traffic issues down here. This sets us up well for future traffic issues or, you know, once the roundabout's in place. And as continued reconfiguration of Townsend takes place, this is a necessary product and the modeling shows that. You know, there will still be delays at all the intersections in this area. You know, the perfect answer was continuing hill crest down through because this is our first alternate to Townsend on the east side of Townsend. But that neighborhood's in the way and we're not going to condemn twenty homes for a street. So this project is the next best thing we can do. But that being said, you know, it's, it's not ideal with how tight everything is in that area. But it is the best that can be done with the conditions that we have. And it will result in an immediate improvement. And then even more so in a long range improvement when you start looking at the long range planning and road layout and modeling in this area. So.
Can you talk about the modeling for that roundabout? So when folks hear that we're not quite ready, I, I, I think you don't mean twenty twenty two. You mean twenty twenty seven.
You have five to ten years. And so with with the project, so what this project will do is some will reallocate to the other intersections. So if people are northbound on Townsend, people naturally start to learn to go to Odell Venture. Or Ogden, those signals there are same things for, you know, people coming off of Townsend, those persons that way. So we have traffic studies planned that'll look at how that's reallocated, see how those traffic patterns redistribute and and are functioning and growing long term. At the intersection so that the T intersection, this immediate intersection that'll be constructed with this. At the end of this project, the level of service is acceptable. So it's within range and is modeled to be within range for five to ten years at least, or at least five years, I think, is how they modeled it. And so all indications are there's enough, there's just not heavy enough side traffic on East Oak Grove yet. And so there will be sufficient gaps that getting out of there will be relatively straightforward and safe and within established standards. Not to say there won't be, you won't have to wait a couple of cars to to get out, just like any busy intersection, but be reasonable delay to get through that intersection.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Scott?
I have another one. When you talk about that hard closure where Woodgate currently comes out and hits the highway, you mentioned barricades and then and then real curb and gutter. Is that real curb and gutter and like finishing that a hundred percent part of this project?
Yep. So this project will continue it. So it'll catch on. We did the South Townsend sidewalks project about five years ago. That did all those missing links in there. This'll kind of tack on right where that project ended and connect it to the sidewalk in front of U S Bank. And so it'll look just like it was there all along. So you'll have a natural continuation of curb gutter sidewalk and the drainage infrastructure there.
It'll look finished.
Yep. Yep. So it's, yeah, it's and continuous. So we don't want to have gaps in our sidewalk network there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Except public comment. We have none. In that case, I'll consider a motion to approve the In that case, I'll consider motion to approve the project.
Mr. Mayor, I will move that we approve one million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand eighty-three dollars and seventeen cents in expenditures for construction of the Woodgate Road realignment project as presented.
I have, I have a motion in a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Item twenty-three. Moving Montrose forward, twenty twenty-one street maintenance contract award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will screen share again. It'll let me. Here we go. So this is a consideration of two contracts totaling one million, seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. The first one is to Skip Houston Construction, the amount of six ninety-nine to sixty-nine seventy. And the second one is to A-one Chip Seal Company in the amount of three eighteen, four hundred twenty-four. So this product is broken up into two different contracts for the different types of work that I'll run into. Or I'll get into here in a minute, but this one, I'll go a little deeper into the history for anybody who might be joining. So back in twenty eighteen, the city created its Moving Montrose Forward Initiative. Which kind of placed a renewed focus on you know, capital projects that are going to help with the expansion and quality of life here in Montrose. A large part of that was street maintenance. That also included some of our capital projects, trail projects, pedestrian connectivity projects, things of that sort. But the overall goal of improving, you know, the driver experience and mobility staying ahead of growth. If you go to our Move Mo page, you can see our street maintenance and capital plan there. And it talks about how we go about and how we allocate various kinds of funds for street maintenance activities. With street maintenance work, we do have asset models for all of our streets that use a pavement condition index and degradation modeling to kind of tell us where that sweet spot is of with what funds we do have available, where we should spend them. And that's what was used in prioritizing the roads and where to focus efforts for this project. In conjunction with some of our streets operations, so our Public Works Streets Departments have a kind of rotation where they go around, I think it's an eighth of the city, every year that they try and get primarily patching and crack sealing done, which is kind of some of your lower hanging fruit for street maintenance work. So this focuses on some of those areas to stay ahead of that work so that we're not crack sealing an area that really should be patched or or vice versa. And so with that, we have, the first contract is the the patching contract to Skip Houston. I think he's joined here. Thank you, Skip. I'll go down to the map. So the patching will focus primarily on the streets highlighted in blue on this map. And so that's not to say these streets will all see a large overlay and brand-new pavement. We don't have the funds for that, but this is getting rid of the areas that have essentially experienced failed pavement. So if you think of, you know, big alligator cracking, reded areas, things of that sort that really can spread out and get larger and do more damage to other areas of the road. Those things only grow with time. But also create road hazards or reduce the driver experience on those streets. And these again are hitting areas that are to be cracked sealed in-house with city crews either this year or next year to try and stay on that rotation. The other piece of the project is a slurry seal. That's in these neighborhoods here. They're about, these pavements are getting close to twenty years old. So this is east of sixty-seven hundred road between Niagara and East Oak Grove. Kind of American village area. These pavements are in relatively good condition. And so that's something that as part of the asset management, there is a principle of keeping the good roads good. So this product is a slurry seal, which is not a chip seal. A lot of people think it's a chip seal and people hate chip seals and hate a lot of phone calls when I say the word chip seal. But these are a, it's a fine aggregate kind of black surface. We did a couple of them or did some neighborhoods in this two years ago. San Juan in front of the Drive-In Theater, Rio Grande has a slurry seal on it. The neighborhood east or west of sixty-seven hundred road, north and including Cirque Way has a slurry seal on it from a couple of years ago. And this is essentially a sunscreen for the street. And so the idea is these relatively newer subdivisions, newer being, you know, only twenty years old versus some of the other areas in town that are older. You know, one of our kind of primary enemies to pavement condition is just our harsh sun and UV breakdown and embrittlement of the roads. And so this kind of acts as a sunscreen for the road, keeps it from getting embrittled. When it gets embrittled, it's less, it doesn't take the pavement loads as well. Fractures more easily and also unravels a little more easily on the surface. That UV binder breaks down and you start to just, you know, one rock at a time, start losing that pavement and it becomes a rougher surface. And over time, you're just actually losing your structural integrity of the pavement. So that's what was the logic behind these. We would love to hit, you know, ideally, we'd love to hit all of our residential streets with slurry seal eventually. Just getting on that rotation as funds become available to start hitting all these places in town. Some, you know, as you get into the older places of town that have, you know, pavements that are sixty-plus years old. Now you just end up with more intense patching or even overlays of some that are far gone. So it just gets more expensive to do it. So your money doesn't go as far, so. You know, just maximizing those funds. The degradation curve of a road, you know, the preventative maintenance, you know, if it's one dollar for yard, I'm just using relative numbers to do preventative maintenance, it's five or six to do, you know, pair of replacement or overlays. And so trying to catch them that sweet spot before it falls off that cliff on the degradation curve. The little bidder for that work was A-one Chip Seal. They're out of Denver, three hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred. All of this work will be, or this was all designed in-house. Thanks to Ryan for going up and down every single one of these streets, mostly on a bike to identify all the patch areas and and make sure that we're hitting all the right areas and maximizing our dollars. As far as schedule and traffic control, so I'll talk about kind of the three primary areas. So South Woodgate and West Ogden have some patching on them. South Woodgate will have flaggers allowing traffic in at least one direction. And then between closures, they may ramp down into patch areas between when they remove the asphalt and when the paper shows up. West Ogden in front of Home Depot, that'll have lane shifts, so you'll have traffic in at least one lane in each direction. All of the other patching is primarily taking place on lower volume streets, so there'll be, it's like on the Woodgate, you'll see signs that say, you know, close local traffic only and likely have barricades around some of these patching areas, so people can still get to their homes. Slurry seals are a little harder. They do require a full closure of the roadway, so while those are being applied, it takes about four to six hours to do that work. And they kind of at one street at a time, we'll give advance warning with door hangers. No parking cones, notifications on car windshield wipers for anybody parked in the street. But try and get the word out ahead of time. And and usually they'll stagger that work so that they have places to park elsewhere and get in and out during that work, should they need to get out during the time that that work is being performed. Usually they hit the street. You know, after kind of everyone's gone to work and try and get done before they get home from work. So hopefully a lot of people, you know, there's obviously staggered schedules out there, but it's generally what they target to try and limit that impact. And then, of course, access for emergency services will be available at all times. So if there's ever an issue or somebody needs something, it's okay to wipe out the slurry and we'll get it back and we'll give the ambulance a nice undercoating.
Scott, could you explain why we don't do that at nighttime?
Pretty noisy and in the visuals, so they cover a lot of ground. It's a good question. They cover a lot of ground in a relatively short amount of time. And so to try and get light set up to do that would be pretty invasive on the neighborhoods and relatively expensive. Our experience last go around is it was relatively it was manageable. We didn't get a lot of complaints. The community, as long as the communication's good, it goes well during the during the daytime, we end up with a better product because, you know, with the black road and black product you're applying. If you're not seeing well, you could end up with a you know, the truck will lay it down and they're going through and actually fine tuning it and squeezing it and getting, make sure it's getting all the all the little pockets. So that daylight is important for that. Great question.
Scott, would you like to comment on if somebody has a pothole someplace they need to be fixed where they can go online and send that information in?
Certainly, yeah. So primarily pothole patching, so the smaller scale patching, this is, you know, larger contracted scale, but a lot of the smaller scale patching and pothole repairs are done in-house by our streets crews. The best way to get that information out is through our what's the name, a better Montrose app. Sorry, I don't use it very often. I just walk down the hall. But yeah, you can take a picture of the pothole, it automatically like geo-tag it. And then it sends it to our crews and then as soon as that's fixed, you get a notification that tells you when it was fixed and who fixed it and all that.
All right. Any other questions, Scott? Do we have any public comments?
I have one question for Scott.
Yes.
So I live in one of those neighborhoods that's going to be getting the slurry seal. So my question just was, do we have dates for when they'll be doing that? Just so I know about when we can expect those road closures in our neighborhood?
Yeah, so that'll depend on the contractor's final schedule. So that's one of the first things we hammer out with them is when they intend to get into certain areas. And then we have to coordinate that with the patching contractor too to get them, get their work done and out of the way. So those dates are fluid at this point. And they got to get their mixed designs and everything done and approved, so. Hard dates aren't known for sure. It'll also depend on, you know, they come, these kind of contractors just thought over, thought around the entire region and so it depends on where we land in their schedule. So as soon as we know that date, we, and it kind of solid, we don't want to release it prematurely if something's bound to change. But as soon as those dates are solid, we do press releases and then at least forty-eight hours prior, everyone will get notice personally on their, on their door and vehicle and things of that sort. We'll put out message board signs and stuff too. Just to make it really obvious.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? In that case, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve one million, seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine ninety-four in expenditures for the completion of the Moving Montrose Forward twenty twenty-one street maintenance project as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Staff reports. Shani Whittenburg. Giving us a use tax, excise tax receipts.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Yes, this would be the February report for sales use and excise tax collections. So let me share my screen and we'll get started. All right, can you see that all right?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so like I said, this is sales use and excise tax collection report for February of twenty twenty-one compared to the same time period in twenty twenty. General fund sales and use taxes collected at three percent. In February, retail sales are at fourteen point three percent. Construction use tax up a hundred and seventy-seven point seven percent. Not a huge dollar amount, but definitely a, an increase from twenty twenty. Use and auto use tax up almost a hundred percent. That's mainly due to auto tax. With total collections at twenty-one percent and a positive budget variance of twenty-three point six percent. Year-to-date retail sales is at fifteen point eight percent or three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Construction use taxes up eleven and a half percent or twelve thousand dollars. Use and auto use tax at fifty-one point one percent or seventy-four thousand dollars. With total collections up seventeen point six percent or a total of four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars through February. Our budget variance is positive of twenty-four percent or almost three hundred thousand dollars. Public safety sales and use tax, effective January one of twenty twenty, we started collecting an additional point five eight percent for public safety. In February, we collected almost three hundred thousand dollars or twenty-one percent more than we did in February of twenty twenty. Year-to-date, we've collected six hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars or seventeen point nine percent more than we did through February of twenty twenty. With a positive budget variance of thirty percent or a hundred and forty thousand dollars. The Montrose Recreation District, we're collecting point three percent for them for their new facility. And in February, we collected a hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars or twenty point eight percent more than we did in February of twenty twenty. Year-to-date collections at three hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars or almost seventeen percent more than we did in twenty twenty. Our excise taxes are additional to the sales tax, so hotel excise tax adds point nine percent with restaurant excise tax adding point eight percent. In February, compared to February of twenty twenty. It's nice and green on the screen. Hotel excise taxes at six point eight percent. Restaurant excise tax up almost six percent with total collections up six percent and a positive budget variance of six and a half percent. Year-to-date collections, hotel excise tax, it's getting there, but it's still down five point seven percent or six hundred dollars. Restaurant excise taxes at three point six percent or two thousand five hundred dollars with total increase of two point three percent through February or almost two thousand dollars. And a positive budget variance of two point nine percent or two thousand three hundred dollars. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that the vendors agreed to give up to fund marketing in Montrose. In February, we collected thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars or fifteen point two percent more than we did in February of twenty twenty with year-to-date collections at almost seventy-four thousand dollars or seventeen percent more than we did through February of twenty twenty. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and I will take any questions or comments you may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much, Shani.
You're welcome.
Youth Council comments. Gudison, do you have anything to pass along to us today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I can give you a quick update on the projects we're working on. So last month, we did a recruitment project for the Youth Council, trying to especially go for the eighth graders that'll be entering high school age next year. Informing them about the opportunities of Youth City Council. And yeah, just getting them informed about that. So we went on a, we did a presentation to an eighth grade class, a large eighth grade class a few weeks ago. Had quite a lot of interest too. So that was very good to see. We have another presentation coming up. And then this month's project would be in conjunction with the joint proclamation we made earlier today with our Earth Week environmental projects. Last week, we had a street cleanup for the Youth City Council members. That went very well. And tomorrow, we have a street cleanup with the great folks at Montrose Anglers. So we're looking, looking forward to that a lot. So that concludes my report on what we're doing. But before I, before I conclude, I'd like to just thank the city for all the progress they're making on these street projects and especially Mr. Scott Murphy, our city engineer, working really hard on these. It's amazing. Just like to comment real quick on each project. First of all, the Tropea project. You know, I'm a, in Montrose, I'm a young driver and when you get started driving, of course, you're a little bit nervous and apprehensive about everything. But as you go along, that, those nerves start to wear off and you get comfortable with driving. But we all know that even once you're a good, comfortable drive driver, you have those places, those intersections that you still try to avoid and that have bad traffic and the Tropea intersection is one of those places. And I really appreciate what the city's doing and how quickly they're moving to get the stoplight up there. Yeah, definitely to hear that. After hearing that gentleman's testimony earlier, you heard how bad accidents can be there, so definitely a great progress being made on that. And then real quickly on the Woodgate project. I have extended family that lives in that Sneples Hermosa neighborhood south of of Oak Grove. And I know since Hillcrest was extended, that neighborhood's had a lot of added traffic. People shortcutting through there on their way to places like City Market. And I know the pushing Woodgate through past towns and will, will discourage that a bit. And I know Uh, my family and everyone in that neighborhood's really gonna appreciate that, and uh, yeah, just again, great job.
Well, thank you. Any city council comments?
Yeah, just for the public to understand that, um, yesterday in our work session, we did discuss going to full. Public access meetings, public being present in our meetings, it would have been a little bit too quick. For our uh poor, overworked tech staff to be able to get that in place tonight, but we will be doing that. And be starting to have the public in present in our meetings, starting on our May third work session. And we look forward to having the public present again.
Thank you. I do have one other question too, Ann, would you like to talk a little bit about the Yard of Month Club?
I think I'm gonna pass to Bill, he he knows more about that now than I do, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay.
The Yard of the Month program, uh, we are, it's an annual program where we. Uh, try to encourage a little participation in the neighborhoods and a little friendly competition. And hopefully help people have a reason to get out and and do some gardening and landscaping and beautification throughout their neighborhood, so. I think the mayor was recently approached by Ashley P Tech in the Office of Business and Tourism, she's our community events. Uh, coordinator and uh is the one in charge of that program, and we've also reached out to the Botanic Gardens and. Uh, the Parks Division, uh, Jackie is part of that as well, and so there's a team of people put together. On a monthly basis to take nominations for Yard of the Month, and. And we encourage people out in the community, if you notice a yard in your neighborhood or just a. Uh, house, every time you walk by, you're really proud to walk by that house and you're. Particularly proud to have it in your neighborhood, or you know people who work really hard on their, on their um properties. Uh, please give Ashley a call at the O B T. Uh, or shoot us an email, uh, Ashley uh. P Tech at O B T would love to get an email from you, or you can email the mayor and uh. Inform them, we'll put you on a list, put that property on a list, and then we'll send that review team out on a monthly basis, and they'll sort through those. Uh, nominations, and then they'll make an award, a sign will be put up in the front yard, it's similar to a real, real estate sign. And that'll be put up in the yard, so for the next thirty days, all of the people in that neighborhood can celebrate the success of of their neighbors. And there'll be a photo opportunity for the newspaper and also to put it out on social media, so uh, it's really exciting. Modown Showdown is the name of that, so when you hear Modown Showdown, it's not really a face-off or any kind of. Of battle out in the community, uh, other than uh. The the Yard of the Month program, there are some cool social posts that uh. A few people at the O B T made some videos here in the last couple of years. Uh, for that particular event, so please go on and check out those videos, they did a great job, Kaylee and Kendall. And William Woody uh put all that together as well as a few other people, so.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I got a comment from Council. I just, the new visitor's guide, it's the first time I've seen it, I don't know how long it's been out, but I know it's a tremendous amount of work. And a really great team effort from our O B T team, Office of Business and Tourism, and it looks fantastic, so. If you um see these around town, pick it up, it it's very inspiring, all these things you can do in your own backyard. Or if family's coming to see you for the first time in over a year and you're looking for something to do, lots of good ideas in here. And my hat's off to the staff, we're producing an amazing visitor guide.
And if you stop in downstairs at the O B T, there's pretty good sales going on, some children's closing and other items in there, so.
Yeah, and I can update you on uh just how new these are. Um, today, myself and uh Cory Cavello, one of our uh great part-time staff at the O B T. Uh, we ran over to Public Works and got the first boxes of these and distributed them for the first time this afternoon. Um, so, yeah, we're, we're among the first people to to see this, but yeah, it was a pleasure to work. Work on this guide and uh, big thanks to uh both the youth council supervisor and. Marketing Director Kaylee Rivenberg for putting the guide together. Um, all of us staff, we just, we just wrote paragraphs, she put it all together, so uh. Um, big kudos to her for all of her great work on this, it was a, it was a lot of fun.
Great. Anything else? Then I would take a motion to adjourn. Well, we have a motion, do we need to vote on it, or you just wanna quit? Okay, all right, that concludes our meeting for this evening, thank you.